Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, April 24, 2024. It's our afternoon session. It is 2:04 PM. My name is Ty Mencer, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Corneille on Zoom, Commissioner Carolyn Aviha, Gary Edwards and Emily Claus here in the Boardroom, County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Robbie Campbell and Rob Gilchrist. We're here to cover a few different topics. First up is Thurston County Sheriff's Office Proposed Acquisitions. And we have the sheriff and his leadership team, so we'll...
Deputy on the scene here, what's going on?
Trying to be. I'm willing to be in.
Very good.
Risk management.
Public virtual tenants is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. And we may or may not need a full four, two and a half hours for this afternoon's session, but we'll see. So County Manager, anything before I pass to the sheriff?
I'll hand over to the sheriff. We're here again for the same topic, so I guess we can open it up for questions because I've already, I think, explained what these two pieces of technology are. This is a work session too, so if we're able to, if you guys want to see a YouTube video or anything that's in the link on this PowerPoint, if that's possible, we can also pull that up. It really gives a better perspective, I think, of what these look like when they're actually used. Because me using my arm signals isn't really the most effective way to communicate that. So it's whatever you guys need to help better understand this and make the best...
How long are the videos that you've got?
They're pretty short usually.
I mean, have you got them all there ready to go? You just push the button and it starts?
I'd like to see it.
I'd like to see it.
Okay, we can... Then I'm gonna turn over the mouse.
Are we gonna hear what Risk thinks about it after we get done watching it?
If you'd like to.
Yeah, I'd like to, sure.
Star Chase. I think the only video I had in this one was just a... Linwood PD currently uses Star Chase. And this just is a couple minute video just about Linwood PDs.
So this system we have is called Star Chase. It's like an air tag basically that we send in a projectile that attaches to a car. If it's involved in a felony crime that we normally wouldn't be able to pursue for. It shoots, it attaches with like a glue and a magnet, a combination of the two. It sticks to the car and then it gives us updated GPS coordinates that are very accurate and updated on a regular intervals. That's tracked by dispatch from by us to help us track from a distance and not apply a lot of pressure. And it makes things a little bit safer for the rest of the community. Before we had Star Chase, we were just watching people drive away. And if we don't have, you know, just if we just have basic information about who they are, but you know, just a face, you know, poor video quality, no license plate information, they're gone. I mean, there's, there's not much chance that we're gonna be able to catch up with those people. With Star Chase, we got a chance to, at minimum, recover property. Our policy has us back way off, so we're not applying pressure. We're not pushing the suspect to do anything crazy, anything dangerous. It's, it's a nice little stopgap for us, whereas pursuits, they've always been inherently dangerous. That's part of the reason why legislation changed the way they did. This really fills that gap in, in that it allows us to track from a fair distance, again, in real time, so we can share some of that information with neighboring agencies so they can also help with us. So we're not using these trackers to track people over long distances, to generate information about movement, you know, learn about their behavior. There's nothing to do with that. It's about capturing the suspect in the heat of the moment during, during the execution of a crime and only applying it for those situations. We're seeing more and more success the more times we apply it and debrief and use lessons learned to, to help us get better.
So I'll fast forward to the grappler videos. Real quick on that, how close do you have to be to, I mean, how far away can it hit?
It's about 20 feet, it looks like, based on all the videos I've seen. Like, like you've seen, in order to comply with pedestrian safety stuff, it can't be a bullet. So we're not shooting, you know, this, this crazy bullet down the road because if you miss, you know, it depends on what, I mean, it really shoots it like a little lollipop. And you get two chances for every deployment, so. And included in the cost with the tags, it also, it's as many tags as you need. So included in that $1,500 a month per year vehicle, if you have a bunch of stolen cars, you keep tagging, they keep sending you more darts to swap out. So it's unlimited darts. And again, like, like what you've seen with that, our, our policy would, would clarify if we get this piece of equipment, that, you know, for lower level issues like traffic infractions, especially stolen cars, they'd be extremely helpful, so we're not destroying the stolen car in the process of recovering it. It allows you to tag it and back off. And for more of the serious felonies where we're not gonna back off anyways because we need that person, we, we cannot risk that person not being captured. A homicide, a robbery with a gun, a carjacking, we can still tag the vehicle. That way, if it does, you know, get on the freeway backwards and we don't pursue it, we can still keep track and reengage with it when we can find it, so.
So the, the video, next video is for the grappler system. There's a couple short videos in here just demonstrating the different uses or where they've been used.
Thinking of start cutting carbs. I need to drop my belly fat.
If you want to drop this.
Suspect under arrest following that police pursuit that took law enforcement across multiple parts of the Phoenix area today.
This was on every freeway in the valley. It ended safely near I-10 and 48th Street. Fox 10 Stephanie Bennett joins us live at the scene now to run us through a crazy day out on the Phoenix freeways.
Yeah, crazy indeed. This is exactly where that pursuit came to an end. Police used a grappler, which is basically a device that wraps around the suspect's tire and safely brings them to a stop. Tonight, we spoke with the inventor of that device, who says he's pretty proud at how his hard work paid off today.
Technique used was textbook. The perfect scenario and perfect execution of the grappler.
It was a job well done for the Phoenix Police Department as they ended an hours-long police pursuit using this grappler system. The creator of the device lives in Peoria and says it was remarkable to see it in action.
We've only had a few stories where some of the uses have been on like a dash cam, and so it's been limited, but for it to be live TV, it's pretty exciting.
Stock created the grappler back in 2016 after being frustrated by the number of innocent people getting injured or killed during high-speed pursuits. Now he can't produce them quick enough. It works by using a heavy-duty nylon net that can be lowered from the front of the pursuing police vehicle. And with the touch of a button, the rear tire is lassoed, stopping it in its tracks. Police can then reel in their catch, as shown today.
When you have a vehicle, several thousand pounds of steel, traveling down the road with an unpredictable suspect in there, it's kind of important to stop the vehicle.
The pursuit started around 2:30 PM when officers say the suspect's car was blocking the road near Cave Creek and Deer Valley roads. The suspect was passed out with weapons and drugs inside. Police say the man woke up and started ramming the police cars, boxing him in, then took off. A helicopter kept an eye on him while detectives responded. After the grappler was deployed, less lethal rounds and a police K-9 was used to take the driver into custody.
I just commend Phoenix PD for being the leader when it comes to the grappler. They've used it the longest.
Now, police say the driver will be booked.
These other videos are a little bit more specific to it, not a live newscast. I don't know if you wanna watch them as well? Sure, let's try one more. Because it's pretty interesting. I mean, they're short.
ACC, you can also have a way of passing the lane. A wrong side of the road.
So I guess it works on front-wheel drive and rear-wheel drive vehicles.
I can confirm it's hard to pit a trailer. Thank you. It's a little easier than my hand motions.
That one for sure. It was hard to visualize how it worked without CD. Star Chase was...
What's Risk think about this, Brett?
Uh, we're a supporter of it. When the sheriff first introduced it, I was watching the work session and the call chief could see us right after that and said, you know, our risk pool had dropped this off to us or showed us this grappler at one of the conferences about a year ago. And I had contacted Sheriff about that time too. I think as you saw, they're trying to keep up the production on the grapplers because they're so readily used. But the risk pool was introducing the grappler. They also told us about a reimbursement grant that they would give for this. So I contacted our risk pool as well. We've secured a $2,000 grant or reimbursement for the grappler or Star Chase or really any of the systems for this period. And probably an additional $5,000 next year for the same systems. So the risk pool, Risk, we've looked and as you know, all pursuit litigations can get very costly. Pursuit, law enforcement pursuits is one of the, I think, highest police activity or can be involving police injury, police cars, I mean, fixing the cars. You heard about some dollar figures yesterday. We're currently in a litigation on a pursuit claim that we can't talk much about other than the attorney fees and expert fees are above both of those years combined right now, just on that one claim. So not saying that the grappler would have prohibited that issue, but anytime we can have a risk reduction like the grappler, like the Star Chase, where we're looking at the safety of our officers, our deputies, we're looking at the safety of the public and their property and can reduce any type of liability. This is one area we are behind supporting.
I have a question. You said you got a, you've secured a $2,000 reimbursement grant. Is that just a flat 2,000 or is it like 2,000 for the Star Chase and 2,000 for the grappler?
It's a flat 2,000.
Okay.
Just for any of them that they want.
Can I ask for a point here?
I, I just, it was great hearing from Risk. And I want to thank the sheriff and his staff for finding safe alternatives to pursuits and thinking outside the box and getting creative. And, you know, you want to buy some nets and some Nerf darts, and I'm all for it.
Yeah, I mean, the big, the big piece to keep in mind is that it's been a very strange thing over the last couple of years because prior to the 2021 law changes, very few cars ran from the sheriff's office. I mean, we would go traffic stops, traffic stops all night long. And maybe once a week, you'd have a car flee for, you know, always is typically dumb reason. And then you'd have, you know, your, your cars that are involved in some felony crimes that you might get behind. And then, once the law changed, the auto theft spiked. The number of cars went from maybe one a week to closer to five to 10 a day in Thurston County. And now we've got this law changing where all those cars will be pursuable on June 6th. And, you know, a, a big reason that people didn't run was they knew the sheriff. They were trying to figure out which law enforcement agency was behind them. Like Olympia never really chased very many vehicles. Obviously Olympia is more dense, much more risk. But they're trying to figure out if a county unit was behind them because they don't want to go to jail for a felony eluding crime. And this was a, our effort to get out in front of this and try some things to mitigate what's coming. Because I am concerned that people are going to test this new law. June 6th is gonna roll around and people aren't saying, oh, well, you know, it's illegal now, so we're not gonna do it. I, I'm concerned that people are going to test this law and run. And I'm sure some of you saw the video footage of the trail pursuit. You know, our traditional methods of ending pursuits is a pit maneuver, but you can't do that on a trail. You can't do that in the middle of I-5 with cars around you. These are tools that allow us to de-escalate or end the pursuit directly behind the car in the same lane as the car. Otherwise, do any of the tactics that we currently have in pursuit, we need a lane somewhere. We need a shoulder big enough or an oncoming lane that we can get into temporarily to get the pit maneuver done. Commissioner?
I just wanted to share with the other commissioners that June 6th is when I have my ride-along scheduled. So don't, I, no other commissioners can try to take that day.
I'm wondering, so you had mentioned with Star Chase that multiple Washington agencies like had a, you know, gotten funding through the Washington State Commerce Grant. And I'm wondering, is that grant still available? And is that something that your office is going to be applying for? How does that work?
Yeah, so last year, they offered to give us 1.4 million dollars. A bunch of agencies applied. I was told by the legislator, oh, don't worry about fixing the pursuit laws. We're gonna give you guys money. We got $0. We applied for $100,000 to equip our agency with basically what we're asking for here today, which was five Star Chase units and I think five grappler units. We ranked 22 out of, you know, 100 or whatever it was. The first 17 agencies got money. And they got money for things ranging from flock cameras all the way to helicopter parts, FLIR and things like that. This year, those agencies are ineligible, is what I've been told. So we bumped up, I think, in our competitiveness. But some of the feedback that we got was maybe if you guys had an existing program to build onto, like Spokane already had a helicopter, they wanted to upgrade their FLIR ball. So there was already a program for the, the grant overseers to look at and say, hey, you're building onto something here. So this was also a part of our efforts to become more competitive in that grant and we'll once again ask for probably another $100,000.
When will, when does that grant come out or?
Six weeks?
Yes, I think they ended, I think we just got the application. We got it all filled out. We updated some of the stuff from last year, and I think we turn it in in a couple weeks here. And then I think the funding will be available next year, kind of like the one last year was the same time. And they're just now starting to get those installed in the state here from that, that grant last year.
I have a couple questions. Earlier you mentioned when the laws changed, you saw the stolen cars going from like one a week to five or 10 a day. Where, where's that information? Where can I find that?
Oh, it's all over the place. Leah Landon has some of the crime data. The Washington Association of Police Chiefs and Sheriffs keeps track of all the neighbors' data, which is what's formatted and entered into the national database. So the WASPAC year end report, if you go through, they do one for '21, '22, '23, '24. And that's where they talk about a whole bunch of things, including stolen cars, murder rates. You know, the stats, of course, right now is that police officers are down and crime is up. It's been the most recent one. So WASPAC is a good, they're the ones who report officially to the legislators.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Okay. And then I had a couple other questions. You mentioned the number of Star Chase and grappler systems. You said about five each. Is that like, I did the math and to stay under 50,000, which is the goal, right? With these requests, to stay under 50,000?
I, I think that's what we, we ended up going, it was like, one was 47, I think one was a little over.
Okay.
Forty-five. Well, 45.
So, okay.
That's for the purchase price. That doesn't include the rate that the shop will charge through,
Okay.
through inter funds to install it, for instance, but...
And those rates, if we included those and it put it over 50,000, would that change the procurement policy that you would have to operate within?
No, because we're still doing the single source.
Still single source.
Okay. I asked last time for a contract and I don't think that we've seen a contract yet. That would really help me. Do you have one available?
We, we just got them this morning. We're reviewing them right now. Legal, just to look at them and now Risk is reviewing them.
I think they were also sent to, to Rob, maybe?
All right, I've been in meetings all day, so if it came in today, I've not seen it yet, but I will look.
It took us some time because we're, that's a new process for us. We've never done a contract to purchase a piece of equipment and it doesn't sound like anyone else has done it. So we're trying to like create this new template for the first time. And the other kind of confusing part is that if you're the vendor, you're probably not gonna sign a contract. You sell stuff. It's not like an ongoing, right, like, sure, they'll send us the nets, but we have to pay for those nets as well. 300 bucks a piece. So I think that's also where we're, we're trying to figure this out on our end because they're just vendors. They sell things. They don't go under contract per se. Except for, here's the price we're gonna sell it to you for.
Okay, yeah, if I could, once I see that, I'll feel more confident in like discussing this. At this time, I don't really feel very confident discussing it. We've talked about it a lot of times and the PowerPoint has really limited information, but the contract would answer a lot of my questions. And also, like, the procurement policy does require a written contract per RCW 3904190. So I'm surprised to hear that there was no template or that others don't have to go through this process. Because it's...
Purchase orders. Yeah, we checked with Public Works as well because they order a lot of equipment.
Yeah.
And they're like, no, we don't do contracts. We do purchase orders.
Okay.
Which is where we're, it's like, it'd be like going and buying body armor. You just buy the body armor. The, the vendor's not gonna sign. They're gonna be like, well, our legal needs to look at it now because we don't sign, they just sell stuff.
But is the, just, because I'm curious, the body armor purchases and stuff like that, are those sole source procurements? Or do you have to go out and like look at multiple different companies for those?
Well, they're not gonna be sole source, no. Body armor's not.
That's what makes this one different, right?
Yes, sole source, yeah, sole source.
Most of the body armor stuff that we got, they're on state contract.
State contract.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Thank you. So... I thought I heard yesterday that there's kind of like a backlog happening, right? So what's the, I guess, if we were to order, like, when is the estimated arrival? And then after that, what, like, how many cars will have to be kind of out of commission, I guess, until Central Services works through it? What's the timeline on that?
Well, part of the timeline, I think, is that, like, two of the vehicles that we would put these on are our new traffic unit. And those vehicles are currently being outfitted. So it made sense that like... And those vehicles are currently being outfitted. So it made sense that like the time, you don't have to go rip an old bumper off and put it on an old car. We have two new traffic cars that are getting, and they're the ones to do a lot of traffic stops, so it made sense. The other vehicles, we would be, we would be basically amongst our command staff figuring out which vehicle. So it would just be, you know, those cars come in, they get outfitted. The first two are probably going to be really slow because the, the vendors come out and teach the county shops how to install them. After that, they become certified installers and then the process will go faster.
Commissioner Fornier.
I, I understand the, the sole so, sole source conversation, but I don't understand why we're talking about going about a different way of procuring something. This is like buying, like you said, this is like buying a set of tires. And why are we worried about contracts with a, with somebody that's selling us a product, right? Is that, I mean, why aren't we just going about ordering it the way we always do through a purchase order?
So Commissioner, I'm going to answer that. We are ensuring that we are in compliance with state law.
Just like always.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just for the first time, though, that's, that's where I'm getting, I think that's where our team is confused. Because like, we even reached out to Public Works and they're like, we haven't been doing contracts for.
Been a policy for quite some time and I will follow up with.
Okay, yeah, because we're just trying to figure it out too, because we're looking for a template for a contract to do a single source purchase order and it doesn't exist.
We don't have templates for everything.
So that leads me to believe that it might not be occurring. So that's why it's taking a little bit longer to figure this piece out is just, we're trying to work through this process that has been described to us for the first time, that's all.
Sure, and Sheriff has new county manager, I'll, I'll work with staff to, if something's new and we'll sit down and figure it out so we can explain it, especially if there's a department that's been doing great work, purchasing stuff, you know, we want to make sure everyone understands how to move forward.
Absolutely.
Are we going to make a decision today?
It's already on the, you're going to vote on it on Tuesday.
On Tuesday, okay.
It's on Tuesday's agenda. There's a motion to remove it.
I would like to remove it and hold off on this. I mean, that's not enough time to review the contract, even if I received it today. And we received public comment, I don't know if anyone saw, we got a public comment today. And I've also had quite a few conversations with constituents who feel as though the cart is being put before the horse. And like, we need deputies, Public Safety Sales Tax just passed with the promise that like, we're going to have more deputies on the road and that's really what I'm hearing the community say they want. I also, just listening today about the grants coming up and the commerce grant that's due in six weeks, that sounds promising as a means of funding this request. I know that it would be delayed, but I do appreciate like trying to be proactive before June 6th. I think that's important and I appreciate you trying to look for alter, safer alternatives, like Commissioner Fornier said. But if there's funding on the table in the future, I would feel comfortable waiting and seeing how this pursuit law changes things while we're applying for other funding. And without considering this other funding and the grants, can you remind me where, where you'd be funding this from if we were to approve it? Would it be the vacancy savings that you're using?
This is a funding request. This is a sole source funding request, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just not comfortable using general fund money at this time when there's a lot of grant money available that we might get and that you're already going out for. It feels like it would be more fiscally responsible to just wait for the grants.
Well, we'll be, there's nothing to decide today. It'll be on the agenda setting Tuesday morning where the board can contemplate a motion to remove it or to go forward with it.
Okay.
And that gives us from now until then to review any new comment that's coming in or. But we've got the sheriff's team too, so I just want to make sure we, whatever questions can be gleaned from this team, here's your opportunity today. In a public meeting, obviously you can always reach out to the sheriff anytime, I'm sure.
And with Brian's presentation, I can only say this seems to be quite a tool to reduce risk. I've been in Brian's shop before as the risk management representative and I can see when the risk pool starts putting out money for programs like this, I think it's been looked at and they've decided it's the way to go.
I do have another question. If we were to, like, which one would you prioritize if we approved, let's say, just one of these items? Which one would you feel is most important at this time?
I would think the grappler is probably more effective. It's got less moving parts in that sense. It's, if you can think of the two technologies, you know, Star Chase is a little more like tech savvy and the grappler is more rudimentary. It is, it is just a net that grabs onto the vehicle, you know, and that's going to be effective in all types of weather, all types of daytime, daytime, nighttime, heavy traffic, light traffic. Whereas Star Chase, you know, when it gets really wet and cruddy out, that's why we want to, we want to test these things out before we go and say, hey, we're going to buy, you know, 70 Star Chase units to outfit the whole fleet. Well, we really want to know how effective those are before we, before we make a budget request of that size. So this really was intended, you know, and kind of like what Robin brought up last time, this wasn't meant to be an E R and R replacement thing. This was meant to buy just enough of these that we felt we could diversify them through the agency and actually get a good sample pulled back to report on and say, hey, commissioners, we used Star Chase 10 times last year and only two darts stuck. So at this point in time, we'd like to sell those to Redmond because they're running the whole program, right? Or whatever it is. On the other hand, the grappler was deployed 10 times, it worked every time it grabbed onto them. And here's the projected cost savings that Risk has come up with to say, hey, we, we didn't get sued. Well, maybe the suspect will sue because he got caught, but, you know, we didn't crash in anyone, all these different things occurred. So it was really more of an opportunity, knowing the laws are changing, knowing that there are going to be more pursuits on our roadway likely at the beginning when people are testing these laws out, how can we mitigate that?
Yeah.
I had a, I don't know, for Risk, would this be something if, if the board were to approve this on Tuesday, could you track the data to show before they had these items, what was the, you know, quarterly or, or biannual impact of vehicles, because I'm sure chases are routine, versus now that these tools are implemented, how does the cost of, of incidents, damage, does it go down, is it up? Could you track something like that?
We could definitely work with.
We would track some of that with.
Pursuit and we could look backwards on our litigation costs and our settlement costs.
Okay.
We have that date already, so we could just look at the reduction. And that's really what, that's really what Risk sees. A lot of the safety of the deputies, we've had two deputy injured in a pursuit just this year. So just looking at the safety of the deputies there alone is, is one of the most important. The money savings is great, but you have two deputies out for a week and then others are picking up that time and doing overtime. So there's a risk there.
I have a question on that note. This might be something Risk could help me with. Maybe I could sit down and like chat with you, I don't know. I'd, I'd be interested in learning more about the process of evaluating risks for these things because I've been trying to do a lot of research myself that maybe you already have, now that we're talking about it. I've been looking into a couple of cases where the grappler actually resulted in fatalities, both officer injuries and fatalities of the people that they were pursuing. And I've been trying to put together, I know pit maneuvers can be really dangerous as well. So I'm trying to compare the two and like weigh the pros and cons and see, is this really a safer alternative? Because it has resulted in fatalities, but maybe you've already done that research and could help me understand. Like, is that something you evaluate when you're looking into these things?
We do.
Okay.
The, we evaluate the liability both of using it and not using it.
Okay.
The other important thing to keep in mind is that a vehicle that is equipped with Star Chase or the grappler can still conduct a pit maneuver. So it doesn't preclude a unit that has this technology from still using that other tool. It's just, it's another tool. It's the reason that deputies are equipped with handcuffs to restrain people and also a taser and also a baton and also a handgun. And also all these different things and a less lethal 40 and it's, it's just one more tool. It doesn't mean that every outcome ends the way that we want it to. The goal is to increase the likelihood that the outcome ends the way that we want it to.
Okay.
Good? Okay. Guess we're good on this topic.
Good.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is South County Transfer Station update. South Public Works Director Jennifer Walker with us. So we'll wait for her to get up here and we'll get going.
Hi, Wendy.
Hey, how are you?
Good. We'll do introductions, but Wendy is our consultant with HDR. I've said this before, I got a new iPhone. I have it on quiet. I think I've turned it off, but it still is going off, so I apologize. Yes, I. Doing everything I can to. Have that last me more than a month because I'm ready to. Okay, are we ready to go in?
Well, yeah. Start with introductions.
Bring it up in the.
Do introductions before you.
Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director. To my left is Jeff Dicker, he's our Solid Waste Manager. And with us remotely is Wendy Mifflin. Wendy is our consultant for all the solid waste with HDR. We've been for a number of years now. And then Angela is one of our administrative staff and she is taking notes for us. So with that, this is in regards to the South County Transfer Station. And so I want to give a little bit of background as to how we got here. Back in 2018, we had, we consulted to have a facility condition assessment and recommendations performed on our solid waste facilities, the Waste and Recovery Center up in Lacey and then our Rainier and Rochester Dropbox locations. That report provided recommendations, we did have a lot of deferred maintenance and we have tipping fees and what was described as a large balance at times in our fund for tipping fees. That then populated our capital improvement program. So there were projects that came out of that. Two of the projects that came out of the recommendations were to upgrade our Rainier and Rochester Dropbox locations. Currently, those two transfer stations, there aren't scales there. So people come in and they, the materials that they have and what they pay is based off of our staff using yardsticks to calculate.
Yardstick?
The, yes, so it's more area versus weight. So we saw some opportunities there, hence the recommendations, and we moved forward with a high level estimate for what those improvements would look like. The dollar amounts that came in for those two upgrades to those two facilities was significantly more than we thought it would be. We then took a step back and said, okay, well, there's some areas growing in South County, certainly around the Yelm area. Does it make sense, are there additional services that we could provide? Does it make sense to maybe look at a small South County transfer station? It would alleviate some of the traffic at our Waste and Recovery Center. It takes people off of some of our transportation network, not having to drive as far. So we took a look at that and started with some outreach to the community. What did they think about that? What, what types of services would they like to see? And we came and we'd reported back in two, January of 2023, the results of that outreach. We got at that time permission from the board unanimously to move forward with a siting study. So we prepared a siting study and we talked about it with the Waste and Recovery, or with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And that is how we got to where we are today. And so with that, if there aren't any specific questions on the background, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
And thank you. And actually, thank you, Jennifer, actually covered the first several slides here.
Sorry, Jeff.
Absolutely, fine. So as, as she mentioned, we had a, over the last, in 2023, HDR prepared a exciting study to look at opportunities in the South County. We used GIS to look at different sites and Wendy's going to talk more about the study, how it was prepared and how it was done. So with that, actually, I'm going to hand it over to Wendy and she can give you more information on the study, what, how it was done and what criteria was used and ultimately what the recommendations were that came out of that study. So Wendy, I'm going to hand it to you.
Thank you, Jeff. So next slide, please. So we started this project as Jennifer and Jeff spoke to you in 2021 by starting with a site evaluation for a potential transfer station in the South County. We set out some siting criteria, which you can see on your screen. We were looking at a site that was more than eight acres in size, pretty much vacant land or limited buildings. We didn't want to do demolition if we could help it. We also wanted the site to be outside of the residential zone, outside of the prime ag lands, outside of the forest designated land, and specifically not in a wetland or the 100-year flood plain. Garbage doesn't work well with water, so you want to stay out of flood plain and, and wet areas. And then we also looked at, was there any endangered or protected flora or fauna habitats? And then, of course, not historical, archaeological or cultural significance. So that's the basis that we used for the 2021 initial study. Out of that study, we, we came up with seven sites for additional evaluation, which you can see on the map. Couple of things about that map. There are two small airports, privately owned airports in the southern area of the county. You will see those with the red circle around them. Transfer stations have a requirement to stay around, stay away from airports. Garbage attracts birds and birds don't work well with planes. So transfer stations and landfills have to stay outside of a buffer zone of airports. So we put those on the map. And so you can see the seven sites that we looked at map wise for the 2021 site evaluation. Based on.
Wendy, do you have a magnifying glass? There you go, that's better now.
Is that better?
Thank you.
So what you're saying is that Thurston County does not want a new airport, that we just need to put a landfill area right there.
There you go, you put in a landfill and you won't get an airport. Okay, next slide, please. So out of the 2021 study, we had three, we went through and we prioritized sites based on some criteria. We came up with two prioritized sites. County Site A, which is the current Rainier Dropbox site, and then Private Site D, which is a privately owned piece of property, 30, almost 34 acres, that's just off Military Road outside of Tenino. And so all of these had zoning of rural residential resource and so would require an application as an essential public facility to move it forward for permitting. Next slide, please.
Wendy, can you, I'm just wondering, because of that old military, isn't that like a real narrow two-lane road where that's located at?
The area that we were looking at is kind of across the street from the Organics Processing Facility. And there are some turnout lanes there, but yes, it could potentially require some upgrades to get a turnout lane into the site.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, the county took a step back because we had, you know, very few sites. It's very hard to find a site that meets the criteria in the southern part of the county. And so the county decided that they would like to go out and do some stakeholder engagement in addition to talking to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And that stakeholder engagement started out with some intercept surveys. HDR staff went to the Rainier and Rochester Dropbox sites for a few days and actually interviewed customers coming into the sites. We also did online surveys and a virtual public meeting. We also did online surveys and a virtual public meeting. And then we also conducted interviews with Waste Connections, who is the local waste hauler down in the southern county. We talked to Lewis County about what they were looking at on their side of the county line. And then we also talked to Republic Services, who is the operating solid waste contractor for the sites. And you'll see, based on the stakeholder engagement, we did eighty-four percent of those we surveyed were actually residential self-haul customers. There are no commercial customers going into the Dropbox sites currently. So we had a high volume of residential self-haul customers. Fifty-seven percent of those subscribed to curbside collection service, which I think is, you know, fairly normal for a rural area. So we did have a number of those that had curbside collection, but were still using the Dropbox sites. And then fifty-eight percent of those, which this was kind of eye-opening for me, traveled to the WARC, which is outside of Lacey for recycling and disposal services rather than using the South County facilities. And then Dropbox customers typically use the sites for, yeah.
Sorry, Wendy, there's a question.
Wendy, um, can, so are they also going down maybe to Lewis County or Pierce County, or any other adjacent? Was that?
So we, we asked, yeah, we asked Lewis County if they knew of, we didn't get any in the survey. But when we asked Lewis County, they told us that South County customers were using their Hazle House facility because it was so far to go to the Waste and Recovery Center to get rid of household hazardous waste. They didn't have any information that they could provide to us on who was using the, is there a transfer station in Centralia? I think it is.
Yes. It is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide, please. So continuing with stakeholder engagement, we asked the customers to rank what they would like to see as additional services. And you could see the rankings that, right now, there's no organic segregation down there. Every, it all goes in the garbage. So they would like organic segregation. They would like household hazardous waste options down there, and then tires and appliances as well. And survey respondents also would like to see seven-day-per-week availability of a site. Currently, the sites down in the, in your lower county are not open seven days a week. And then of the survey respondents, they were willing to travel a distance. And, and that's usually what you see in the rural-type population. So they were really willing to travel, you know, ten miles or more, which was, you know, a little shocking in the survey as well. So after we finished stakeholder engagement, the county and the SWAC got together and, and discussed how to move forward. And so we did an additional site evaluation in 2023. And all of the criteria remained the same as the 2021 site, site evaluation criteria, except the first bullet. In 2021, we looked for a property more than eight acres in size. This time, we looked for a property more than ten acres in size when we did it this time. And I also have to say that the 2023 site evaluation was a more in-depth evaluation. We did a GIS spatial analysis to locate potential sites and then whittled down from there. So with that, next slide. We have a map. Hopefully, you can see this one. We initially had, I can't remember how many sites in the first pass-through, but actually, twelve sites made it through for further evaluation, and you can see those on the map. You can also see the airport area outlined there, and we've broken them down into what came out of the 2021 study, the airport buffer, and then what was potential transfer station sites based on the 2023 site evaluation. So with that, we ranked each site and prioritized them. We had specific criteria, again, that we ranked through, and we came up with three sites. Two of them that were from the 2021 study continued to be the prioritized sites, which is the current Rainier Dropbox site, the Military Road site, which is privately owned, and then a private site L, which is on Gibson Road, which is about thirty-five acres, which is between I-5 and Tenino. So next slide has pictures of the sites. County Site A, of course, is the Rainier Dropbox site. Private-owned Site D is on Military Road, and Private Site L is west of Tenino near I-5. Couple things, I think, you know, you're all probably familiar with the Rainier Dropbox site. It's a really good site. Has County Pit there and on top of the, the Dropbox site. Private-owned Site D is a flat site bounded by a trail on one side. Is that the Chehalis? Can't remember what it's called. Chehalis Trail?
Yes, the Chehalis Western Trail.
There you go. Thank you. And it's a flat site. Of it on the site map, it does have some houses on the far side of it, and it does have a significant dip in the middle of the property, which would potentially help for a transfer station, but, you know, would have, would have some dirt-moving requirements. So with that, we did some preliminary sizing, site layouts, and probable costs. We were looking at some key components for a conceptual transfer station. We know with the number of customers and the tonnage that you could potentially be bringing in through not only self-haul customers, but commercial customers as well. We talked to Waste Connections and asked them which routes they would send through the transfer station if one was constructed down there. And so they provided us some really good tonnage numbers that would be sent to a new facility. So it would require an approximately twenty-four thousand square foot building. Thirteen customer, self-haul customer unloading bays, two loadout hoppers, which is what you push the garbage into to get it ready to go on the train to the landfill, and then a paved roadway network and some transfer trailer parking areas. We also looked at adding recycling and household hazardous waste collection areas, organic segregation and processing area, scales and scale houses, utilities. You would need to expand the utilities to any of the sites. And then some site investigations and earthwork because building a, a transfer station has a significant separation between tipping floor and loadout tunnels. So with that, we have three maps of potential site layouts. County Site A, which is the Rainier Dropbox site. You'll see a potential layout for that site, which included all of the, the preliminary sizing and site layout requirements that I just spoke about. And so it, it lays out really nicely. County Site A also lays out nicely, has a good customer flow. County Site D, Private Site D, you can see that layout. And you can see the trail next to it as well. So that's, that's a, a good site. And then Private Site L has a little bit different layout because of the features of the property, but has a, a good layout as well. The buildings that you see next door to it are, were actually a chicken farm. So it, it's at least in a good industrial area. And the next slide shows you some preliminary probable construction costs for each facility. So County Site A, the overall site cost with, there would be no site acquisition cost. There would be site work, the transfer station, scales and scale house. We have a thirty percent contingency. We're also putting post-pandemic pricing impact. I know if, and you guys all know too, if you're building anything right now, everything's pretty expensive. So we're, we're adding that to all of our costs. So we look at about twelve point seven million for County Site A. For Private Site D, twelve point eight five million, and for Private Site L, thirteen point nine five million. With that, I'm back to Jeff and Jennifer.
Okay, thanks Wendy. So really where we're at, next steps is looking to basically narrow our selection of the preferred site down and, and if appropriate, negotiate property acquisition costs and purchase. Following it, getting up a final selection is proceeding and performing like a basis of design type study, similar to what we're doing right now with the work reconfiguration, is looking at doing a little bit more detailed basis of design than the sketches that you saw there for that facility. And then based upon that, probably a more detailed costing would then be developing a funding plan and how we're, you know, how would we move forward with that based upon anticipated capital expense. That is obviously coming to the board with that package.
So right now, it's just information as a part of the process. So we know that as we continue on and we get more refined design, then we have a better idea of what the cost is.
So the one is an enhancement of the Rainier site, that would be one of them. But then the folks from Rochester have quite a drive. Not that much difference probably than going to Hawks Prairie, I suppose.
Be a little different, but
A little bit.
But, I mean, we've thought about that. So one of the other options is looking at potentially keeping Rochester open.
How about
Because it's open a couple of days a week now, so.
Okay, is there any chance that doing some kind of a contract with Lewis County for that particular geographical area? And it's gonna be paid for, I take it, by tipping fees, so. And it'd have to be relatively similar in cost, or they wouldn't use it, you know, so. Any, has any, any thought gone into where the Lewis County Transfer Station is? The mileage to that, the area it might serve around the Grand Mound and Rochester area? I don't know, just, and is the tribe doing anything that maybe they might want to partner? Or just, I'm trying to think out of the box and save the taxpayers money in the end, but I also want to save them a drive if I can.
Are they barred from going to Lewis County now? You have to show your, like, county.
No, so a couple of things. We have, we have had discussions with Lewis County ongoing. At this point in time, they're not interested. Things can always change. They have capacity issues at their facilities, although they are looking at, I believe, siting a new
A new transfer station, but I believe down in Chehalis.
So they're moving a little bit further south.
So, but they are at capacity with their
How about rail capacity? Do we do something right now? Don't we do some kind of transfer to rail that goes somewhere and it's done around Centralia?
Correct. All of our waste at the, for the Waste and Recovery Center is put into intermodal trailers, and that, that is trucked to Centralia where the intermodal yard is. So that was taken off the trucks, put onto rail, and then that's railed to the landfill over there in Eastern Washington Roosevelt. So one of the benefits of going with the new South County Transfer Station will be is that waste that's brought to here, they'll actually be able to accommodate those transfer trailers. So instead of right now, what happens is it goes into Dropbox there, we haul it to the WARC. It gets dumped, reloaded into those transfer trailers, and then goes all the way back to Centralia. The idea with this would be, it would go directly into those transfer trailers. Instead of it coming to Lacey, it would just go straight from Rainier, straight to Centralia. So it, again, reduces the amount of volume that's going through the WARC, which is a plus because you're not, it's just less waste you have to process, and it's a lot less mileage because it's, you know, it's just going, it's not that far away from there down to Centralia to unload, so. And to your point about, yeah, we actually did have that discussion with Lewis County, and they are not encouraged, at this point, with their current facility, they're already over capacity and not wanting additional loads.
Well, if, if they were kind of jammed up, and we're kind of jammed up, you know, we might be able to get together and do something that works. But if we don't talk to them, and that's why where we're thinking of expanding and they're needing to expand, maybe those two thoughts can come together and do something that benefit both entities.
And we actually did ask, ask them that question, actually, in this conversation. Because that was our, our initial thought was, is there a way to cooperate?
Is there an opportunity there?
And they, the response back was, at that point, they weren't interested because they were focusing more on further south than their county. Because I think Central, or Chehalis is less served, and they needed to do something there.
And then I guess I'll go one step farther. We don't have enough garbage to burn garbage, apparently, to make power with, like Spokane does or something. And is there any possibility if we joined forces with the southern part of our county and, and Lewis County, that we might have enough to do something more spectacular for benefit the environment, benefit the taxpayers?
I can address that one too. My previous employer, I worked in a county that also utilized waste energy, which is Marion County, York. So I'm very familiar with this waste energy, and I've spoken with Spokane a lot. We would need more than that, to be honest with you, because they're phenomenally expensive to build. I mean, a facility to even cover our waste would be in the, probably a couple hundreds of millions of dollars to build. And it's just really, in this day and age, because all the environmental protections have entered these systems now, it's, the economy of scale here isn't really sufficient to do it. And that's, Spokane was built back in the eighties, I believe. It's, it was more economical back then to do that. But still, it's, Marion is having a problem with their, because of the costs, so. I, I like, I love the technology. It's great. It's good, it's good technology, but it's just crazy expensive.
Can you explain, I don't understand the first part of Commissioner Edward's question about partnering with Lewis County. I mean, if I live in Rochester and you close the Dropbox, don't I have a choice of to drive to the WARC or to drive to Rainier or to drive to Centralia? No one's gonna stop me, right?
Exactly.
So what's the, what are you getting at when you're saying, what's the idea of partnering with Lewis County on capacity? Rochester can already go there if it's closer.
Oh, they could, if we close ours. That's all I was saying. Well, I, I don't think we want to encourage that without a partnership because it's gonna cause heartburn. They are already overloaded, I guess, you know.
And have two different disposal companies. So we have Republic Services and Lewis County has Waste Connections.
Is that the other guys that we're bidding on our contract?
But why do we care if people, it's like convenience of our constituents, they'll go to the closest one that they can go to. I mean, if I could drive to across the Grace Harbor Line where I live, it would be easier for me if there was a thing and I would go there versus driving all the way to Hawks Prairie, which is a pretty far drive for me.
A couple of things, whether we're talking about the Certified Hauler or we're talking about self-haulers. So the board did pass a flow control ordinance, which is kind of what you were speaking to, meaning that all of the municipal solid waste material
Curbside, is it curbside stuff? Is that what's regulated?
Yes, that it stays within, in the county. We do not have a, a force out there that's enforcing that. We don't have compliance officers or anything like that that are forcing that. But we generally get more people coming to our Waste and Recovery Center from Pierce County because our rates are a little bit lower and it's closer. So if you're in DuPont, that's Pierce County, versus going out to South Hill. And we have folks that down in South County may go to Lewis County because their rates are a little bit lower. But at times, they've had to close it because they are at capacity, so. But again, this was informational as we talk more about the projects. That's also a part of the capital improvement program. So you'll hear more about those specific projects.
Could you bring that slide up? That's the map of the three sites. It showed up a lot better there. I left my magnifying glass at home.
So how are you, what's the process by which you're gonna ask us to decide a site? I mean, what?
We're gonna give a recommendation, and that's what we're looking at right now. So it's been narrowed down. That's our next step, is to narrow it down further. So we're gonna look at the cost. We're gonna look at, if there's permitting that's involved. It's much more difficult to, to permit a new site. It's much more difficult to permit a new site than to add to an existing site that's already permitted. So that'll, that'll play into it.
On the surface of it, to me, it seems like the existing site's the best, but of the two, if we were going to a new site, I actually like the third one a lot better than the second one. I'm not sure why the one's, I mean, the one's more expensive, I guess. Maybe that's why they're, it's third and not second. But I'd be curious to hear why Military Road would be better than Gibson, because that doesn't, that seems counterintuitive to me.
Where is the one on Military Road?
Right there, D, it's right orange or purple over 507.
That's right where Waldrick drops it.
Oh, yeah, Super Springs is right there.
So that's why you're thinking, well, it's maybe the neighbors are already accustomed to the.
Right, because there's already those types of trucks that come in and out and utilize that road.
I see. Is there any benefit to rail usage there? Because there is a rail somewhere right in there.
Yeah, the private, it's like the.
It's Tacoma Rail Company.
A short line.
They probably haul whatever, I don't know.
And then Private Site L, that's right here. One piece is, it's, again, it's just weighted towards Rochester and then so Rainier.
You're right here now? Where are you at right now? Yeah.
I'm sure they'd help us.
Okay, it's over here.
That's Rochester, Rainier.
So could I, let me address a little bit on Private Site L and, and why it was rated less than Private Site D, just so you have it in your mind. Private Site L got rated less when we scored it because of how traffic and vehicle types would have to come out of there. There is a residential area that would have to be driven through with the transfer trucks and, and commercial trucks to get from Private Site L to Highway 99. And so that's one of the issues that caused it to be rated less than the other private site or the, the Rainier site. And then the other site was how existing utilities could be brought into that site. So just something to keep in mind as you, as the county looks at site.
Go first?
What do you, what do you call a airport? I know there's landing script right here on Gibson, but I don't think, you can't call that an airport, can you?
So there's a private person that owns a plane. I can't remember what, it's a pretty fancy plane that takes off from their house. And they're actually registered with the FAA and they have registered their site as an airport site. And once you do that, then you have to meet the FAA requirements for setbacks.
I think I know that gentleman and I don't think he's flying anymore.
It's still ranked, ranked as an FAA site, so.
But there must be a process to sell out. Not that that's a more preferable site. I'd just hate to see a limiting factor that's a bureaucratic deal that isn't used anymore if we could.
Well, having, having property owners change what they can or can't do on their property is not bureaucratic.
Money talks and what locks, you know?
I don't know if this is a question for Wendy or if say because of what level of analysis has gone into the current county owned site. As, as Jennifer alluded to, there are some, because it's already been impacted, it's already has an operation, you're looking at sort of an expansion of services. And you tie in the desires from stakeholder engagement of the organics, household hazardous waste, tires, appliances, et cetera. Have you looked at all operationally of sort of that enhancement, say at the current site while maintaining the, a level of service still in Rochester? You wouldn't be adding sort of those additional programs for waste streams particularly there, but just expanding, say at the Rochester, I'm sorry, the Rainier site, but maintaining the basic service, what the cost implications might be for that?
Jennifer, are you answering that or me?
You can answer that, Wendy. I'm processing, yeah, processing.
So, so we didn't specifically look at that in this study. It was something that would be considered as we move forward. We were really looking at the possibility of closing both sites and having a single facility to handle everything. If we could find a piece of property that would be centrally located, there's just really nothing that's available that will fit the criteria to build a transfer station there. So I think it's certainly something that the county can, can consider as they move forward with site selection and then what would be required at the Rainier site to upgrade.
Hand down?
Do I stop?
Okay, I'll go to Commissioner Edwards.
Do you know the difference that we're faced with the yardstick versus the scale? If we, if we had a scale, I'm, I'm picking up that we're losing out on something by doing a yardstick. And if we had a scale, what would we benefit? Difference in cost? How, how are you, how are you coming up with that difference?
Typically, we probably are losing a little bit of dollars because there's some contractors and other individuals know that we're on a volume basis there.
So do you put bricks on the bottom?
So you can bring some heavier items, you know, that was the cubic yard of feathers is the reverse of cubic yard of roofing. So it's just more accurate because right now, again, it's, it's average and, you know, just taking it based upon an average of all, you know, weigh, you know, how much volume came in, you know, how many tons came in, so you use that average. But it's not, maybe not necessarily always the fairest way to go, but having scales, I mean, a ton's a ton. So, you know, because we have folks that will argue the point sometimes.
I was going to say, I think that we also have challenges with.
Subjectiveness, yeah. So it's, it's hard to argue when you have a solid weight. So it's, it's, again, it's more accurate, it's fair for everybody. And so, and I think we actually would collect more money, to be honest with you.
It's also a smoother, a more effective throughput of the facility to have sales.
I'm trying to get ahead of the 12 million or whatever it would cost to upgrade a particular site, you know, to, from what it is now to what it would be if it was ideal. So when we haul a container to wherever we haul it to, it must go across the scale at some point. So, okay, we know that we brought in X number of dollars with yardstick for that container. And that's boxed up on a truck and it goes to wherever it's going to get rid of it, it must go across the scale at some point. And what's the difference? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. What is the, you know, close to the difference? I don't expect it to be exactly.
So it is weighed as it moves from either Rochester or Rainier, it goes to the work. And so, you know, we weigh it in there so we know exactly how many tons came across. Again, that's, that's basically, you have your volumes that you've measured and you, and the tons that you get, so it's going to be different for each.
It would be, it would be.
So there's an average that we use. That's, that's why they charge so many dollars per cubic yard at those Dropbox sites because that's based upon an average of, you know, this much volume and this much tons that we've got, that we've received.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, is there a difference that's substantial? Maybe a better solution would be raise the rate a little bit because if you're getting tricked by the guy bringing the bricks in the bottom of his truck or something instead of, you know, feathers.
And they're not tricking. I think they're in compliance, they're, they're just choosing to not go where they're going to be weighed and go up to the work.
Well, that's kind of tricking because it's convenience, takes a piece of it.
And just wondering. And most people aren't going to go through the extra effort, they're not going that far, you know, that typically is going to be people in that, you know, that circumference around that site.
Sure, sure.
But people are smart and they'll realize, you know, on a weight basis that it's more economical for them if they have a particularly heavy load to go there, I suppose. But yeah, it's, it would definitely be an improvement. Again, it's, it's much more accurate. That's kind of where we'd like to get to be eventually.
And, and the, the scope of the problem that we need to do this is substantial. So because it is substantial, we need to think about how we're going to correct that deficiency, I take it, right?
And account for growth.
Yeah, but we're going to have growth in those areas serviced by those particular boxes, those collection boxes. So once that growth picks up a little more, we charge just a little more because everything goes up. Then do we have a better system in place there with, without doing this whole thing, acquiring land, 12 million dollars, different site from what we've got? We do have two sites that work. How well do they work is the debate, I guess. You know, and how, how much growth will be in the area? I'm just looking at it from a balance. Yeah, good, I mean, good stuff, but we're not going to make a decision on Tuesday or maybe.
This is informational, just informational.
There is, can you remind, remind the board sort of what, how much time will go into the additional refinement of prior to your recommendation?
The, the schedule, actually I don't know what the schedule is for coming back and narrowing it down. I think that's the next step we're working on with HDR, so.
Whatever we do here, is it going to affect our contract? I mean, we've got one group that hauls, other group that does something else, so we're going to have to do something else on our contract and appease somebody, it sounds like.
Well, this will open up the terms to renegotiate the contract. Our position will be, we think it will be favorable for Republic Services because as Jeff mentioned, they will not have to take the materials that have been dumped at like Rainier and Rochester and drive them all the way back up to the work to then put them on the tipping floor, compact them, put them in a closed container, drive them back down to Centralia and to then put them on the rail cars.
So that might even address their concerns or something, I suppose, that's possible.
And they will have additional labor because if they're running a transfer station, there'll be Spoder and somebody running a loader and some additional equipment that'll go with it. So they will have some additional costs related to it, but there's offsets as she mentioned, so. But it would, the contract would open because there'd be a change of conditions from our current situation.
Right, and the new elements maybe are in a different world in a sense versus the elements that are already been negotiated and agreed to.
Yep, we're just evaluating, and that's why we've engaged Republic Services in looking at the very high level plans and getting input from them on those as well as Waste Wendy, do you have anything more that you would like to add before?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Why don't, why don't you, because we got new people here, why don't you just mention how much experience Wendy's got in this game as to why we're listening to her?
Are you talking about my age now?
No, no, I, I'm in that category, I never bring that up, Wendy.
Well, okay, so I'll just tell it really quick. So I was a solid waste manager in two counties in Eastern Washington for over 25 years. I worked for two counties for over 30 years. And then I've been at HDR for the last almost eight years now. So I've been dealing with garbage, I'm not going to say 40 years because I'm not there yet, but it's getting close, so. I was really young, like a teenager when I started, right?
Thank you, Wendy.
Okay, so we've covered that. Any final questions or comments? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Your presentation maps are a little, little sketchy on the.
Wouldn't it spread out so far?
I know.
And you try to put them all online?
It's hard to do, yeah.
We are mindful of it, but I, I appreciate the feedback.
I'd complain more, but then people would just say, well, that's the old guy, you know?
I did get, I, I do want to close the, or close the loop back on the purchase order. We're using purchase contracts, not purchase orders. So just for clarification.
Thank you for coming so prepared. This is super helpful, having all the information.
Thank you.
Makes me miss, wow.
Were you the entrepreneur?
Let me know if you're sincere. All right, Commissioner Items is the last piece. If there's anything that needs to be addressed. Commissioner Fornier, you got anything? EDC report?
We had a great EDC meeting. Let me find my notes. I gave, just kind of gave updates on, on stuff going on at the county, talked to them about our legislative agenda. We had a presentation from the New Market Skills Center Director, and I'm going to get some more information from him as they're looking to do some expansion projects and they're going to need to tie into kind of a, the greater legislative agenda for Thurston County. But it's exciting what they're doing there and there's, there's a lot of room for, for growth and opportunity for students. I did not know that they serve students from Napa Vine to Shelton, so it's more than just Thurston County. I thought that was really interesting and a lot of the classes they have are pretty cool and they had a, they had their culinary arts students provide lunch. In addition to that, we had a report from Ashley Whitley of the Washington Center for Women in Business and WCWB is doing very well and they, they reach out beyond Thurston County as well and, and they've been able to support a lot of BIPOC entrepreneurs and a lot of female entrepreneurs and that's something that the EDC and the Center for, the Women's Center for, Watch Center for Women in Business is very proud of. And that was about it, it was a good meeting.
Thank you, very good. Okay, having come to the end of the agenda, we're adjourned.